Kennedy, we're good to go. Okay, and then you get a call order. I hear my call. This work session for the Lafayette City Council to order.
And I will call the Planning Commission work session to order.
You need to use the hammer.
I love that hammer. I even have a little mini one up in my house.
We're happy now.
Okay, please stand for flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Kennedy, can you hold for both?
Yes, I can. Counselor Pollock. Counselor Burrows.
Here.
Counselor Carswell.
Present.
Counselor Golden.
Counselor Kent.
Here.
Mayor Malcolmson.
Here.
So we do have a forum for council?
Chair Kerr.
Here.
Commissioner Building.
Here.
Commissioner Madola.
Here.
Commissioner Rogers.
Here.
Commissioner Adamson.
Here.
Commissioner Webb.
Here.
Commissioner Newman.
Here.
Okay, yes.
My apologies to you guys. My voice is still cutting in and out from seasonal sickness.
I'm not gonna say allergies, because it's not, but you know, it's that time of year and I work with kids. I think we pretty much all know everybody except Commissioner Newman. She's new into the planning commission since the last time we've had a work session together. Is that the only other commissioner, right? And then the same counselors. Also tonight, joining us is our city planner Jim Jacks and presenters from the River Steering Committee. They're gonna be the first to share. I just wanna make sure and share lots of cooks in the kitchen tonight. That this meeting is not a one-part meeting when then all of a sudden everything's done for the park. This isn't just one phase in it, which is mostly council wanting to respect that no matter what direction is going, it's gonna mean work on the planning commission. And we would hate to waste your time and city resources for you guys to work on something that the council could have easily said, oh, if you brought that to us, we were gonna. So this is just a, it's gonna be a time of making sure that we're kind of just a bit on the same page of where council's mindset is. So that you guys can then do your job. But first, because this information could impact that, I'd like to yield the floor to our city administrator who will introduce our guests.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Chair Elder. Some of you may know, there was, we had a Yamhill River Steering Committee that probably started late 2023, the first month, right? Fall 2023, and Sheridan, Willamina, Dayton, Lafayette, and McMinnville were all involved because we all have access points along the river. I know you all should have, at least have a high-level view of kind of what happened in those meetings, for the most part. And there was a pretty big community presentation six months ago in McMinnville, at the McMinnville City Hall, where the Steering Committee, all the ideas from the Steering Committee were brought to the public for the first time. And where the support formed from the state and from the Willamette Valley Tourism District really starts now to take the work and to see, to get those MOUs or commitments from the cities that they plan to move forward with, you know, incorporating their work of the Steering Committee into Park Master Plans and future planning mechanisms for the Yamhill. So with that, today I invited Augusta and Olivia, who both have different roles, but they're both, you know, they're both trying to accomplish the same mission with bringing tourism dollars into Yamhill County via the Yamhill River. So they'll be doing a presentation on the computer behind you. So I will kick it off. If you wanna do a quick introduction and then maybe kick it off, though.
Sure.
My next thought?
Yeah.
Okay, I can't read it from that far. Hello, I'm Olivia. I worked with this at McMinnville the last two years and have been, I was an original member of the kind of convening and steering committee for the Yamhill Rivers Access Project, which was facilitated by Augusta at Willamette Valley and some other partners. And I'll let Augusta introduce themselves.
Yeah, my name's Augusta. I work with the Willamette Valley Visitors Association, so we're kind of the regional tourism entity throughout the valley. And we work with partners like all of you, and then the McMinnville kind of in the tourism sphere. So yeah, really grateful for the opportunity to come and share with you a little bit more about the project. Yeah, so kind of just high-level background, I'm sure you're all familiar with this, but essentially why we started doing this work is we're just hearing a lot from communities that there was demand for improved recreational access to a resource like the Yamhill Rivers. And we'll show you a map in a second, but the reason that's plural is because we are talking about the main stem, the north, the south, and also Mill Creek and Willamina Creek. So it's a pretty large geographic scope. The Marine Board has told us it's about 120 river miles. And that includes flat and whitewater, so really large diversity of water. We know it fluctuates a lot seasonally. So it's a unique opportunity and certainly recognize it's different from something like the Willamette or the Cockamice, these other, you know, larger bodies of water. But we do think there's opportunity for, yeah, this kind of year-round recreation that there seems to be a lot of want for. And so we kind of heard that demand in communities and then the tourism entities. My organization and Olivia's kind of came together along with Travel Oregon at the state level to fund that initial convening process. And so we just wanted to see if there was enough interest to kind of kick this off, and there was. And so, yeah, now we're here.
Thank you for that, Kennedy.
Well. All right, this is working now. Amazing. So the Yamhill Rivers Access Project really just aims to provide clean and safe access to the Yamhill Rivers for residents and visitors. And we're doing that by collaborating across jurisdictions in the hopes to create a cohesive recreational experience that will benefit all of the jurisdictions involved. And the key benefit that we've identified from this project is its potential to support local economies. There has been a lot of research done with organizations like American Rivers or the Outdoor Industry Association that talks about how communities that have access to healthy rivers are often experiencing significant economic benefits. There's a statistic that suggests every dollar spent on river recreation has the potential to generate multiple dollars in economic activity, which will, you know, contribute to job creation, tourism revenue, and overall economic growth.
Yeah, here is a snapshot. Hopefully you can see most of this map. So this is just a look at the overall area that we're talking about. And in blue are the north and south main stem Yamhill Rivers, as well as Mill Creek and Willamina Creek. And like Olivia said, something that's been really important for us as we've moved through this process is having that collaborative communication across jurisdictions to make sure that this can be a cohesive thing. And that doesn't necessarily mean we're putting a bunch of put-in-and-take-out spots all up and down the river. We know there are sections of the river that aren't super suitable to paddling and things like that, but it might be, you know, consistent signage for just viewing the river or fishing or kids splashing around, whatever that looks like. And that's why we've been tuning into what each community is specifically looking for and what those access sites might be. But also, how do we make sure this effort makes sense as a whole across all these different water bodies? And then this map, we've done a pinpoint of this came out of the Steering Committee work that we did last year. So these were the recommended sites that were identified through engagement with the Steering Committee members, as well as those public engagement sessions we held. And so for Lafayette, that's, you know, the Lafayette Locks, the historical access, looking at how to kind of improve that, rehab that, and make that, yeah, something that the community really wants to use and can use safely. And, yeah. So to give you, oh, sorry.
If you wanna move the screen so you can see the timeline and help out?
That'd be great. Thanks, yeah. So this is, yeah, just to recap with a little more detail of how this came about. So that's not this past fall, but the fall before, 2023, we had the initial kind of kickoff. And we just convened partners along with the Marine Board. So the tourism entities brought everyone to the table. And we were essentially just looking to find out, was there enough interest to move this forward, knowing that something like river development, you're looking at a pretty long timeline for some of these sites. It's gonna take a lot of, you know, preliminary planning and working with the jurisdictions. And the overwhelming answer to that was yes, there's a lot of momentum and enthusiasm for this. And so we officially convened the Steering Committee. That included Parks and Rec officials, as well as city and county-level administrators. And so we met monthly for about a year. In April, we held those community engagement sessions. We did one in McMinnville, Sheridan and Dayton tried to hit kind of each larger area of the valley here. And just engage the public. And we had maps on walls. We gave folks sticky notes, you know, identify, how are you already accessing the rivers? What kinds of ways do you want to engage with the water? What do you wanna see? And all of that feedback kind of got rolled into this strategic plan. Throughout that process, we were working with a consultant. That's kind of what we helped fund. And he put together a strategic report that included those maps and some site-by-site kind of asset inventory. And applying like current conditions, desired conditions, things like that. And as we were wrapping that up, the city of Sheridan applied for some technical assistance with the National Park Service. And we were super excited to get two team members through this program called the RTCA or Rivers Trails Conservation Assistance. So now we've been able to work with them kind of since this past August to continue that strategic planning process. We've been meeting with each jurisdiction, kind of dialing in on that asset inventory that was done. And we're hoping to continue working with them for another year to kind of continue that technical support. And Olivia will talk about some of those deliverables.
Yeah. Hello, okay. Beautiful. So as we roll into the next steps, the first immediate one would be that non-binding collaborative agreement, which was compiled by the Yamhill Rivers convening team. It's a non-binding agreement that states that just shows jurisdictional acknowledgement and support of the project. There's nothing required of you based on signing that document. It's just sort of a nod to the cross-jurisdictional support that's required to finalize this project. And it really, another kind of benefit of that agreement is that when we get to an actual development stage, if that ever happens, that having this collaborative agreement that shows the cross-jurisdictional support, because there are so many involved in this, that it will really help with the funding process once we get there, to show that kind of collaboration. And so that has been approved and is out to jurisdictions to sign. We've got one back to McMinnville, but we're still waiting on rest of the partners. And then that leads us into spring of 2025, which is continued technical team assistance and community engagement through our collaboration that Augusta spoke to with the National Park Service Rivers Trails and Conservation Assistance Program. And we're obviously still in the research and development phase of that, but, yeah, just doing those, that site inventory and further community engagement, specifically focusing on private landowner outreach for those landowners whose properties are alongside those like recommended identified sites to ensure that any concerns that are had about things such as water intake valves for farmers or trespassing on private land is acknowledged and heard and considered as we move forward, because that's a really valid concern and we wanna make sure that that is, that we're dealing with that well and making plans that are gonna support safe recreation and legal recreation. And so all of that will continue through the spring and summer. And in fall, we intend to continue our work with the National Park Service and finalize all of that kind of learning and site inventory and feedback from landowners and the community to have those finalized recommendations on the proposed sites. And that will result in the final deliverable, which is the full concept-level plan provided by the technical assistance team, which will have just like jurisdictionally appropriate plans and concepts of what has been identified as a sustainable way to move forward on those sites. Yeah, I think that's, that's it for me. Any more questions? Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, a couple. One is, you know, obviously what it's saying about the National Park Service cuts coming up, what the plan be is if we lose our consultant there. And then the other thing is, you know, for us, Lafayette looking at Terry Park. So I brought this up in one of our last meetings. It was kind of, you know, Lafayette Locks is right here next to Terry Park. So I was hoping that there'd be opportunities to, like, if we're doing studies for things to support Lafayette Locks, that we can get Terry Park included in those and just kind of get that information cataloged. So that hopefully when Phase Two comes along, we're in a better position to apply on our, so speak to some of that, like how we can kind of help move Terry Park along with the Lafayette Locks project.
For sure. Yeah, to your first point about National Park Service, definitely a valid concern. But I think our current, current primary concern is looking at who's gonna take over the lead of, or the role of lead applicant, because, so that was the city of Sheridan. They're having some transition, and so we're looking to kind of shift that to another partner. And so we're in talks right now, but they are very gung-ho. They wanna continue working with the project. I think they came in thinking this would be a two-year support. And that's kind of why the timeline is how it is with those deliverables for, you know, end of next year. So I think we're just proceeding, assuming things are gonna be stable-ish as much as they can be and.
Because it's state funding sources mostly, right? It's the Marine Board and those kayak fees that we're paying.
Once it comes to, yeah.
That's what's gonna be the mechanism. It's, so it's, we're not dependent on the Parks and Service for funding. I was just curious who we're gonna bring in, if we use that grant and the resources we have guiding us through.
The collaborative agreement too, to show, you know, local lend momentum that it could carry on.
And McMinnville postponed theirs, I think. They had a plan or something. They were putting a bond on, and then I saw something that they put.
The Prose Plan, Parks, Recreation, and Open Space Plan I missed all of that, has been approved by council and is moving forward. And I think the bond is coming soon. We can, yeah, go ahead.
Quick question. What's like the technical assistance, just the high-level description of what types of things have they done, or do they?
Sure.
But before you answer that, I just remind all of us, that's a great question, what leads into, remind us that our questions right now are based off of the information they presented, not how we will or choose to adapt it. So, yeah. So that's a great question.
Sure. Yeah, it's mostly its capacity. So we have, we meet bi-weekly with the core planning team. They help us with the agenda for each meeting, kind of do summarizing notes. They set up meetings, help us coordinate with each jurisdiction. And they just bring a lot of expertise and they've done a lot of these types of projects, so they know, like, for community engagement, what types of forms might be successful, what that could look like. Kind of guiding on, yeah, outreach to landowners, what they've done with that in the past, how they've seen success, what potential pitfalls could be. So yeah, it's a lot of expertise. They say, you know, we are here to support. We do not know your communities. We are coming in with capacity to help convene and move things forward and advise.
Like that actually answered your question without even.
Further, sorry, before I?
Yeah.
Putting together more detailed site inventory. They've been compiling that information as well for us. Making a prettier map for us.
Kind of tying together, here's the individual communities, here's some kind of asking. Here's how we think they might fit together, then let the community provide input to that. Create a plan that is overarching through the end of the river, but also tailored to each.
Okay, right. Like your question with Terry Park, that level of like community-specific, site-specific will come later when we have those conversations more dialed into sites in each jurisdiction.
I just wondered, as we do things for Lafayette Locks, like who's, who's responsibility is it to keep Terry Park in mind? And make sure, like, so, because there's gonna be reports and studies that will be relevant to Terry Park. Do you guys have a document to store, data warehouse that we can come to later? Or should we, or Brandon, be cataloging relevant reports as city resources so that we can take the initiative to apply? Who should be responsible for trying to aggregate that so that Terry Park can be in a position to come next?
And I wanna, okay, I'm gonna ask a very simple question, but it's awesome for anyone that watches this later on, because of words. When we say Lafayette Locks, because on there, we're not talking Locks Loop Park, which is not our jurisdiction. We're talking Terry Park.
Well, when we talk.
I'm asking that, sorry.
Yeah, we, they are, their footpath side is a county park that is called Lafayette Locks, but yes, it is not a Lafayette Park. It is a county.
Yeah, so it's just confirming with them that when they reference Lafayette Locks, they're, okay.
Two separate, two separate entities.
Yes. I just know that the common public, and I could easily, five seconds, go get that. You hear Locks Loop a lot. And so that, you know, they might accidentally interchange that, that. I just want to make clear that everyone, I've assumed everyone at this table knew that, but for anyone else, that might be. And you said you had your questions answered. Is there any other questions we have based on their information that they presented? Brandon, is there anything bringing them that you're like, hey, this is?
No, I, I think ideally.
In the discussion.
I, I think ideally because Augusta and Olivia sent me the non-binding agreement. And I said, well, okay, well, that's perfect time. We're discussing the Park Master Plan. If the city really wants to incorporate this into the strategies of the park, let's get in front of them. And then I will be bringing this to the full council, the non-binding agreement at the March 13th meeting.
Okay.
That's gonna be about a month, kind of think about it. We watch things, go over the data.
And so basically this was, here's information so that when it comes up as a possible component to Terry Park, we know it, we're referencing. Okay. And thank you, ladies, for joining us.
Yeah.
Nice concise presentation that I would be able to follow. And didn't put me to sleep. So Brandon, with that, is there any more with work session 4A that needed it?
No.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Okay. So 4B, the Park Master Plan Revision, I will hand it to Brandon for any over. You know, with a staff report, I wanna remind us that we are looking at specifically Chapter Five. And within that, Terry Park, Veterans Park, and Commons. Correct?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, so I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna reiterate the same things I've been reading over the past four months. We've all seen the survey data. We all kind of know what the community's thinking. But the reason why I think why we're all here tonight is on November's council meeting, I brought some discussion from the town hall that we had that presented data that a couple people were able to attend and just kind of looked for some direction to give to the planning commission. But also at that point, I felt maybe the planning commission's self-deliverables or some of the conversations they were having, I wanted to make sure any conversations that the planning commissions were having, council kind of either supported and said, I don't think in the big picture, this is actually gonna happen. Because obviously council has to deal with purse strings, you know, dealing with the public and selling it as, as the planning commission would do. But planning commission really has to refine that work and see how we can make that work within a plan. And I would hate for staff and planning commission do this work, and then it gets to council, and then council's like, whoa, 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 whoa. Six months ago, this could have been averted if we just said no, or we weren't looking this way. So I just wanna have the open forum. I don't think we need a two- or three-hour meeting. I don't think this needs to be a lot of time today. I just think at the end of this meeting, Mayor Malcolm said we'll probably open the floor up for just some discussion amongst council, what they were thinking. And then hopefully maybe see planning commission's feedback and see how they can work things. But I wanna make sure we're all working to the same page. So as we progress in the next six months, two-year, 18 months, that, oh, this could have been said 12 months ago. Everybody in this room should be here in 18 months. I'm gonna force everybody to be here in 18 months. I can't do it again. So just, let's make sure.
Check my calendar.
I'm done.
No. Commissioner. Commissioner Newman.
I don't have the results of the survey. I'm behind the times.
Oh, it's in the packet.
I didn't see there. It's after a blank page, and so I also didn't see it. And so I asked him for a copy.
Okay, thank you.
It's the very.
I stand corrected.
So that is my first quick question for everyone. Has everyone received copies of the survey?
Yes.
I know surveys are wonderful, and then how do you find those answers? So I think there's two portions. The first is, you have to, we have to, we can't hash out a bunch of stuff and then not talk money first. So. Yes, she did. I wish she'd found it.
Which number?
Buried in the back.
And the questions are right before. You have the questions, and then you have the survey results.
So I think council, we have more on our table when it comes to, we know that money going into parks is just one aspect of other things coming at us. So I think it's important for, to find out from council what council generally supports of, we could have all the bells and whistles and plan this all out, but if we never feel like we're gonna be able to even afford a park bench, then why are we spending hours and hours fighting over what color park bench? But so just real quick, the survey results, just so we know where the mindset of our residents are, is, and this could have been that people clicked more than one option. General tax revenue and state federal funding granting. So that basically comes down to use the money you have, correct, Brandon?
General tax revenue, we just measure, even though property tax funds that are going into the general fund.
And then bond measure was the higher of the two choices of fee added to the utility. Bills would be that it would be something that would go to the residents to decide if they wanna fund it or not. I am just one voice, but I do highly something on, something like this that is not make or break. Safety. I don't like putting things on the utility bills that council decides. To me, that's a hidden tax. But like I said, that's just my opinion, but I don't know where councils thought or planning commission, if you have any questions.
Yeah, I've got a thought. Yeah, general tax revenue, as Brandon says, that would represent money that we have or to get. It sounds like bond measure. To me, that might mean perhaps Lafayette says, hey, there is enough interest that the city might decide to float, and I'm just gonna make numbers up. So this is not, this is exemplary only, supposedly, but it might be, hey, the city could float a bond measure and the public would be willing to contribute a $30,000, support a $30,000 or $50,000 bond measure. Something that is separate, that's easily tracked, that is a manageable amount, that everybody can get behind, that does not represent adding additional fee to something or something, but it's right there in front of them. They can see it. That would be, that would be my thought on those two primary sources of funding.
Yeah, so it sounds like based off of the survey overview, which, by the way, we had an outstanding amount of feedback. We're not just talking, this is three people that took the survey. We'll always have people say, what survey? I never had that opinion, that they would love for us to spend the money on the money we already have. But if not, that, yes.
There's two things on there. I know they don't want to spend. Obviously, nobody wants to raise taxes or fees, but. But we talked about a nonprofit like the Friends of Lafayette Parks, because I know there's been enthusiasm for volunteer effort. And then as a coach for the local clubs for Matt Parks and Rec and for McMinville Soccer Club. I, I think the club's always there for space, I know with Matt Parks and Rec, we're always coaching in parks like Pearson Park and things like that. So just another bucket of stuff, we don't have to raise taxes or fees, we couldn't be engaging with.
Yeah, so I think overall that's another option, um, to try for, before. Go, you know, not straight, oh, okay, they, look, there's some people that say bond measure, I think it's like the lesser of the two evils if we go at it. Which the town would rather have. Um, and sometimes it's the, hey, here's what we can provide for you guys with the money we have. Here's what we could get if, you know, we go for this, this and this, but first we're going to try to get. Outside, um.
Yeah, like we're sponsoring Sue Buehl, so McMinville Soccer Club is financing some of the trip that's going to go in at Sue Buehl and, uh, one of our coaches.
But I think it's most, um, we've had conversation before that we need to, um. I am not, it's, I'm not interested, it's sound like I, 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 but I'm not interested based off of feedback that I've gotten from surveys. And in general of, well, because I found financing for this, we're going to make that, I'm not saying yea or nay to something that. Well, automatically it's a soccer field, just because we could get funding for it, when that never should have been a soccer field. I'm just saying, you know, I'm just, because you use soccer, I'm not yea or nay against it. Um, so we could talk funding all night, but I think the big point is just to keep it in our minds that. Any grandiose ideas we have, we don't have a parks budget that is. Overflowing with abundance and our SDCs also, correct Brandon, that we don't have. I mean, SDCs are going to start tapering out even more with.
Yes, and, and, and as you have, uh, Madam Mayor, um, you have the SDC balance up under you. And if we just want to look at, right now, we have about a little over seven hundred and twenty thousand dollars in our SDC, which is, which is only brought in when new development happens. Um, and with the rate of housing being built, unless we have a massive expansion of the UGB or annexation. As we start spending that SDC money, we'll be spending it faster than we can recoup it. Um, so if we look at a project, I know there was a project recently done for a new, new swing set system and a whole new thingy mungy. Um, like workout equipment at one park, I think it was like a Salem or something, I had. I had quoted in, in, in one of the agenda packets, I think in November, but it was like one point two million dollars and they got like a seventy five thousand dollar grant. I mean, that money then, then, then pretty much money goes to one park. I mean, another issue to kind of be mindful of is operations and maintenance. Because as the council knows, the discussions, um, measure five and fifty with the implication, implications of, um. The tax system from the nineties, cities are starting to see a lot less revenue come in. Um, and in the next five or ten years, there's going to be some, some pretty serious conversations about that. Luckily Lafayette is, is, is financially well, but you know, we have to take more and more from our cash carry forward every year.
And what's it going to take to maintain that, I mean, we just had to approve our landscaping. Um, costs.
Which they're doing an amazing job for somebody that lives across from Commons Park, it looks amazing.
So, but, but we have to be careful though, we don't create something that, oh yeah, we found the funding to create it, but now the maintenance is going to take.
And when you look, and when you look at like, you know, the police and fire services increasing. And streets, what is the one thing that always gets cut first, let's be honest? Parks.
Yeah.
Police, fire, water, sewer, all that stuff gets funded, and so if we do these big projects. In twen- ten, fifteen, twenty-five years. Future council can have to realize how much money they have to put into the, because once you install something that big. Just our, I mean, looking at our budget now at two hundred and some thousand dollars, it's a minimal maintenance at these parks, we all know that.
You put in a splash pad.
Yeah.
And I can't tell you how many times because my kids go to splash, they're down for maintenance and that's going to cost.
Yeah.
I'm not saying it's for yea or nay, but.
So first of all, we're significantly under the amount of park space that we should have for a city to decide. So we have to, as we're looking for, we have to look at that. What I was going to ask Brandon or Mayor Malcolmson is, is there a history of bond measures in the city? Um, and they passed, have they failed? Um, has there been anything, what do we know about what's happened in the past?
In the past, um, the most recent obviously was the bond measure with the, uh, fire station.
Okay.
Which I'm also kind of worried about doing another bond when we're only a few years into paying off a thirty year bond with that. And then whatever happened to fire services in the future, what that looks like and depreciation of the loan and interest. Um, and then in the past, there were a few bonds floated for a new city hall, new fire station, new police station, stuff like that over the years. Those kind of fails.
So.
Fire station is the one that passed, but others.
First, there was a combo, um.
That failed.
Commissioner Newman probably has more history on than I did, because I moved here after it. First, it came to the citizens as a combo, city hall, fire station, and that didn't pass. And then it came back to them and it did pass for the fire station. So we have seen. That it's possible to get yeses, but people are going to give their no's. And they want, and those yeses better be like, fine tuned of what we're asking for. Because if something is frivolous to them, it's going to nix the whole thing.
So, uh, when you're looking at that, you see the fire station, okay, that goes to public safety and everything, I can understand that. But a, a parks bond and, and knowing that we are under the amount of park space that we need. Um, and it's something that can be used by the citizen as a whole. Everybody's going to come down to the fire station and use that facility.
They make a bank, so.
But, you know, a parks, you know, especially as we continue to grow, uh, as we're expected to, you know, parks are going to be a huge thing.
Yeah, and I think that's where we are now with the three that we're talking about is. Our, not just the cost of buying more land, we don't have land to buy. That what we have is what we got and we're already under the amount, and so we've got to be really.
What, and what we can do is what will be. Right now.
I'm gonna let, um. Commissioner ends.
Yeah, um, there, there's a heart comes back to some of the stuff that I talked about earlier or later last year. That we, we need to make plans forward and figure forward for, for Lafayette. Then we, we can't, we can't drop it and we can't make promises to the citizens. That we can't keep.
Correct.
So if we're doing, if we're doing parks and we want to do parks right.
Yeah.
We need to, whatever we come up with, we need to include with that to the citizens, the funding instrument to make it happen.
Absolutely, absolutely, it's great to have bells and whistles as a Parks Master Plan. But if we, it could, we'll never, or don't know how we're going to fund that, then it's still just.
I'm not sure that's bells and whistles, I mean.
No, I'm just saying, no, I'm saying, I'm saying, you know, that there's some Parks Master Plan out there that.
How about backing in this a little different way, and that is, if we are going to plan at some future point, and I'll just pick a note. If we are going to plan for a ten to fifteen acre park. We don't know where it's going to be, we don't know what it's going to cost, but we might be able to take nothing more than. A swag as far as what the price tag might be. So that it's not, this is going to happen is if we were to do this from the citizens of Lafayette standpoint. Here's roughly what it would cost. Okay, citizenry.
Will it come from our budget or will it?
I think this should be paid for. And that payment could come from multiple sources, but. Y-y-y, give them an idea of, you know, hey, if it looks like it's going to be something that's a three million dollar price tag. Doesn't mean you're going to spend three million or off, but it lets them know. Oh, if I do want to have this size park in this community that I'm going to live in. At some point, I and the people I'm living around and with. Are going to have to be willing to pony up. Three million dollars or some portion thereof or whatever it is, it's not about saying it's going to happen, it's just, but the idea is. Do we count with the budget we got now, dealing with small parks we got now, so we make today good, at the same time, do that forward looking planning. And put some guest estimates to it and let those guest estimates be. Uh, foreknowledge of what it's going to take, and then the citizenry can decide.
Yeah.
Well, Chairman Kurt, well, we've brought up one point, we talked about, you were talking about need to expand the urban growth boundary at one point. And we had discussed at one point, uh, that we don't have anything on the books requiring developers to set aside land. And we got out of this whole earth development with no added parkland. And you'd mentioned that this is something that we can put in our code. So that whenever the urban growth boundary is expanded at some point, that a developer, when they come in, would have to set aside some kind of parkland. In addition to the SDC, you had mentioned there's a mechanism that we can put in place to do that.
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna do a status check real quick. I'm go, I, I understand that future parkland is important. We are here to talk about these three parks right now, and I, it's not just straight to you, I'm just saying, we're all starting to spiral. Um, I'm going to bring us back in to, let's wrap up real quick, the, where the citizens are saying, hey, money. First off, that we don't have tons of money, we wish we did. Council, um, is your interpretation this, uh, that we would love to see what we can do with what we have. But we also want to see what we can do with some c- community funding, and it sounds like it probably the community would be more onto a bond measure than. Um, a monthly fee, or am I?
I like the idea of, kind of everybody's idea, somebody said, hey, use what we have in house. Somebody said, see if we can collect funding from elsewhere, and then if, if necessary, and we have a very specific plan, then reach out.
Absolutely, absolutely, I don't want to go about, like, give us money and then we'll tell you what you're going to get. Um, so. Let's all agree that there is not a big pot of money. And we want to be respectful that the citizens. Want stuff that we need to at first try to figure it out without just immediately saying, give us money.
So I'll throw a thought out there, maybe I'm jumping ahead, but I'll throw a thought out there, looking at the survey. Looking at Veterans Park, it is very apparent from the survey that Veterans Park is new as a dog park.
Yes, okay, man, I'm going to pause you real quick, one quick phrase that I got to get out there. Council is coming to you guys with the thought that we are looking at all three parks, they're individual parks. But we need to decide what is best as the, as all three undeveloped parks at the same time. Because what's happened is we're coming back with this beautiful plan that is already sitting there for Veterans Park. And was that really the best place to create that would have been at our Commons Park and the citizens want a dog park? Or if we did it two split up, all of a sudden we put two basketball courts.
I, I think part of what I'm getting does tie in, I just want.
I knew you were going that direction, I was just making.
Talking about all three of them, so what I say to veterans could dance with another thing, but. And we got limited dollars, so if I look at just the survey for Veterans Park, I look at two things. I look at landscaping with walking trails and a dog park. Okay, I've got limited dollars. I can't do much, but perhaps from the landscaping and walking trail, it might be nothing more than. A nice path that is built, that starts at one entrance to the other entrance. Maybe it's a circular path, maybe it's just a winding path, now you have a place for a short walking trail. And then the rest of it is used from a, from a dog standpoint. Now, if you put dollars to that, you go, okay, this is what this might take. Here, if we go over to, uh, Terry Park, we've got family picnic and Yamhill River Recreation. We don't know what's going to happen on the recreation side, because that goes in the future.
But we can carve it and set it aside, knowing that.
Dollars or something and try to make a, and again, not a grandiose guess, but what would it be if, okay. You're supporting recreation at the riverfront, people do want, uh, some family thing, so maybe you'll have a. Very limited facility that can support one or two families that's well placed. Again, you can put rough dollars to it, so now that can, it can flex and blend in, you go over to Community Park. Okay.
Sorry, Community Park, I didn't know what the name, I want to, comments.
Commons Park. Commons Park, um, well, obviously we got events and entertainment, water feature, sports. Uh.
It's all over.
That one's all over the place, but let's assume we want some form of sports based recreation. We don't know what that's going to be, but it might be that anything that's water related is down towards Terry from the Yamhill River. Do we want a water feature park, given that water is in short supply in many cases around Yamhill and in the future. Water is going to become more of a concern.
And it's got a lot of maintenance attached.
A lot of maintenance, or maybe some form of, maybe that's a good place to have some form of sports facilities, tie a certain dollars to it. And maybe that ties into what Commissioner Webb has been talking about in terms of, maybe that creates an opportunity for some of the outside clubs to come in. Cheating in his blank slate is possible, not defining it too much so that they can have at least. They might only be able to do three things as opposed to five, because the other two require hardware.
Hey, let's do a real quick, sorry, let's do a real quick status check. To see, maybe we are already in agreement where all of us kind of see what you were just saying. And we're wasting our time circling around where it's, if we said Veterans Park. Bare minimum is some kind of walking path with the goal of figuring out funding for a dog park. It is Veterans Park, my suggestion to tie that in is a monument for the dogs of veterans in war.
Okay.
I just, yeah, inside the box. So the bare minimum of Veterans Park, if we're going to develop it, we at least need to put a flag below, in my opinion. But let's say Veterans Park is, minimum is a little path with the goal of finding funding for a dog park. Terry Park, because of water access, who knows what that's going to look like? But hey, if there's some steering committee and it's feasible, let's. I mean, we don't have to overdevelop that park because it could become a, you know, a family picnic park. What's the minimum, what's the minimum, which is picnic tables with the maximum, I've heard amphitheater, you know, but.
That's in the park's plan.
That's in the park's plan, yes. Commons Park, a lot's been thrown out, the community center's there, there's no playground on that side in ninety-nine. Possibly a, you know, bare minimum would be a small play structure in one corner, um.
They already have a baseball field, they already play soccer there, just.
I know, um, one of the big things that we've discussed, um, when I say me, we, it's. Um, Brandon and me with the, um, Lafayette Community Activities Team is. How do we get a double bang? And it's, well, basketball is no longer going to be over at Veterans, so if we did some kind of. Basketball court that doubles as a covered amphithe-, or not, pavilion, so for community events, we could use it as a covered area.
Yeah, the daycare school has the covered pavilion.
That's kind of the feedback I'm picking up from the survey of, if this is this, and what can, you know, that Commons Park is still. It's the only one that's no longer a walking path or front access, what can we give? That is family oriented of recreational play.
And you can use it in the rain.
But also, you know, I think things like Harvest Festival, how that's already picked up and, um. How many people are pulling, or pulling out these little sun shades and stuff, well, okay, if we can figure out to do a sports court. Simple basketball and even like a volleyball hooks, you know, whatever. That, the cost of that is already folded into a covered pavilion.
Well, in the community market, we did it four or five years ago, did the Lafayette Community Market, and I still own the domain for it, I keep renewing it. It's got better judgment, um, but you know, that would.
No, we've been, well, yeah, we've been dabbling in, bringing, you know, Harvest Fest last year. And then we tried with the garage sales, we realized it was, that was more just to show we could do it, not the best place to do it. So that's kind of what I'm hearing, not just from you, but Council Burrows.
Um, on page seventy is the, uh, is a, the drawing of Veterans Park. And, uh, I've been kind of kicking this around in my head for a little while. And, um. Seeing the survey, survey the people's, you know, want a dog, I see that's going to reduce the size of what. Is, is in, in, uh, in the drawing here, and, uh, so I kicked around a couple of different things. Um. Uh, first of all, uh, my, one of my suggestions and kick around, cross off, whatever, would be to change the name from veterans. To, uh, Heroes Park and have our honoring, uh, veterans and first responders.
So Heroes Park would encompass more than veterans, it would also be.
First responders, yes. And then, uh, um, as for the survey, the, uh, athletic part of our park or our city going to Commons Park. We could, uh, eliminate the concrete ba-, basketball area. And, um, move the, the, it, it calls it a memorial, but the memorial, the flag. And maybe the covered picnic area or something up to that area, that corner. And then, um. If we would take the fence that runs to Washington Street. Um, take it east about four sections. That would open up a small area for benches, picnic tables, uh, maybe even a small children's playing area. Um, I think, uh, at, at that, uh. Uh, at, at that park, if you opened it up for the folks to use, you're gonna need a drinking fountain. And maybe if it's a dog park, one, uh, fountain that, uh, also, yeah, dog watering that, that has capability to be.
Well, and that's where, that's where we're, I know that there's so many fine details, like I know that. And the insurance, it's gonna have to get back to them. I'm not saying you know, just, oh, the water, the double gating, two different big dog, little dog. And that's where Counsel's saying, how funny guys come back and bring us what it's gonna cost.
Um, yeah, when I talked to the neighbor too, they're concerned about the fences and them tearing it up. I actually might did a little round when I took the pictures on there and I ended up talking to a couple of the neighbors there. And I think that was kind of a concern, stuff flying in there, people coming in the U R's and who's, who's maintaining the fence?
Um, Commissioner Miola?
Yeah, um, well, for the Heroes Park, I like that.
I kind of like that.
Um, if you even got rid of the park core area, not to say that's fantastic, but in the budget for that, I think approximately. Approximately it was about three hundred thousand dollars. Cannot imagine a dog park being even close to that.
Well, and that's why I wanted to say, hey, let's look at all this together, because if we are taking away. This park's master plan of bringing in a park lore. We've got to make sure that we're saying, okay, but over at Commons, we're gonna give some kind of recreational.
Right, and that's what the, uh, the survey kind of shows, is common part being more athletic with.
Because I don't see a dog park going to Commons Park.
No, uh, and that's, yeah, that's not what, that's not what the people, uh, uh, indicated.
Take the direction of, take the direction of the installed or completed facilities and they're perfectly located. When it comes to budget, maybe the way of looking at it is, uh, again, I'm gonna oversimplify.
No.
Here's your part.
Yeah.
Okay.
What, can we put the money away?
It's like pole cause, it was a fence change cause, what is it, just a simple path, maybe it's made out of gravel? What does that cost, insurance? As you build things up, it becomes.
Phase one, phase two.
Uh, you, you talk about may, may, maybe at Heroes Park, there is space where you do put in, say, two picnic benches. Maybe even both of them have a little cover over them for infinite weather. But you put dollars associated with it, so now here's all your pieces. Here's all your chess pieces on the table, folks.
Mm-hmm.
Right, here's the cost associated with them, here's your parks.
Yep.
As you put those chess pieces on wherever you.
Those dollar signs being up in the.
Those dollar signs, now you can get a good you for, okay, here's what we can do with what we got. Here's what we can't do, here's how we can tailor each park so that it comes close to where the survey says. Now you can sit down and go, hey, we can do everything from, and again, exaggerate. We do everything from a simple walking path that is. Ten thousand dollars to a fully developed Heroes Park, it's got flying poles and dog watering stations and cooking grill and blah, 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 blah. And it costs three and a half million dollars to build the thing out.
So, yeah, so the goal is, we're hearing the people want this, this is what the cost, but their minimum would be this, uh, counselor.
Forgive me for not knowing the answer to this, but how do we go about, um, getting estimates on all of this? Do we pick three places to?
That would be between Brandon and the ca-, the commissioner.
Yeah, that's pretty R P, we're out to that.
And that's not what we're trying to hash out, no.
I'm curious, because I'm talking about how we're, yeah, how we are going to sell this to the public and the cost. Making sure that we get our responsible with how many estimates we.
Absolutely, and that's.
Um, and not just estimates from right in our immediate area, but make sure that we're encompassing Salem and Portland and, because. There are so many places right now that are just looking for work, because people don't have the budget. So if we're gonna eliminate or add stuff, it's really noticeable to me that we need to, um.
So.
Assess or get more than three people.
What I'm hearing as a counselor is whatever gets brought to us, we need to know and have done the research on more than one.
Cause I was looking at the cost of a flagpole, two grand for a flagpole, are we kidding? Like, that was insanity, so that's what's.
Yeah, that's probably.
That's actual.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was looking through some.
Well, you also have to realize that it has to be, you know, it's not just putting one in our yard.
Uh, well, I understand that, but there's, there's so many ways to cut costs that it.
Well, and it could be funded by somebody, the way that you could go out and say, hey, if it's Heroes Park, it's a Veterans Park. That opens it up that some association might be willing.
We were at Gallery Theater over the weekend for the fill around room, and there, every single seat in Gallery Theater had a nameplate on it. Of somebody who donated the money for that seat. So that's also a possibility of bringing down the cost so that we, as a city that is responsible to our residents. That they are giving him some massive bond measure.
Well, I think that's what we were talking about earlier with, whatever we decide, we need to know that we've done what we can to. Be responsible for the cost, uh, sorry, I have counselor, Commissioner.
Oh, yeah, you're right, I'm using. I would like to know where the name designation came from for Veterans Park, we discussed Heroes Park. Just gonna throw that out there, that if there's a specific property donation or designation, that that's what that.
Well, and that doesn't ever be decided tonight, but no, that's great. That's something amazing, and that's why I, I love your detail of remembering each little thing. Uh, that planning commission, when they bring it back. It, you know, um, I think that first off, can we, are we all on the same page that Veterans Park, even though the. What's currently standing there is a beautiful thing. Even if that wa-, even if we had that funded, maybe like, that's not the best place for it. I'm not saying that there is a place for it, but that Veterans Park sounds like bare minimum, a little bit of a walking path. All the way up to a dog park, depending on.
And even, and even with a walking path, it gets so used as a park, this makes it a little easier for people to use it.
Yeah, and there's a park plantation park right here, it's just this little pocket park, but that's a great place for a hoop. And the city owns this whole section along Millican Creek here.
We're not talking about that part of it.
The north side of town.
Sorry, we're gonna go all night if we start bringing all the other parks. Okay, so Veterans Park, we've taken away, we've taken away the sports aspect of it. Um, and all the details of, well, that's where, no matter what, direction we go, it's gonna fall in planning commission. But we want to be able to step back and support you guys. Next up, Terry Park.
So, so from, just to, sorry, from a finding commission standpoint, we would want to look at from the perspective, okay. Heroes Park, Veterans Park, name to be determined, decided, if it's gonna change, but we would want to look at that and kind of. Perhaps focus in the direction of, yes, it would be. Dogish park and it would evolve along though, uh, uh, uh.
Yes.
Dog park, I wouldn't say dog park, I'm saying dog park with memorial, potential memorial inclusion flag. So it would evolve, and that's the direction of flavor it would go.
Yeah, the goal is to eventually find, if not already find, funding for the dog park aspect. So we are reserving it with phases to try to get to that. Not a, well, we can't do that, so we're gonna do this, it's the paths doesn't override its part of the complimentary.
Yeah, it would, yeah, everything has to work together.
Uh, does Counsel feel, okay, planning, or city planner?
Just, uh. I grew up with dogs, I have a little ten acre farm, so I'm used to dogs, but as an adult, I've never had a dog. Once the kids got out of high school, and so the dog parks that I have gone by and looked at. They're really big, and whatever dog size it is, they can get out and really run. And dog owners seem to really love that. Some dog parks have a big dog section and a little dog section. I would suggest thinking about the small size of Veterans Park and thinking of it as a dog park. If you get a big dog out there, two or three or four, and any number of small dogs, it's gonna fill up. They're gonna be running all over the place.
It is.
And then if you have a completely different function, such as a veterans, heroes. Memorial recognition kind of a thing. People probably aren't gonna be going to that kind of a facility. And thinking that there's gonna be dogs running around and barking and so forth.
Mm-hmm, well, I think that, that comes into, how much do you add or not add and supplement? What all can fit there if it is going a dog park route? I do agree that it's still smaller, like, our family loves one of the dog parks that's in McMinville. Currently, my husband and I will not take our dog to our student dog park, because technically, our ordinances and our rules. Say it's a leash park and I, but I know that people want that. If it was, that's a great spot that my daughter could walk the dog to get a little bit of chance off leash. But yes, we would still use one of the bigger parks. It's, we're a small town, this is what we can allow, we're not gonna try to compete with one of the bigger dog parks in McMinville. Um, it's just something within walking distance to at least that dog's off the leash a little bit. Um, or. Yeah.
It does get used.
It does.
Yes.
Um, and I'm, my hope is, is if we give people an official spot, it's easier to curb them. Where right now, Community Pride Park is nonstop dog poop, nonstop dog poop. Um, but that's a whole nother topic. Okay, so Veterans Park, does Counsel, I'm gonna bring it back to, to counselors real quick. Um, can I ask you guys a side conversation?
Yeah.
I get that, it's just really hard to, for, um. Optics and recording purposes, um, so Counsel, do we feel comfortable saying we support? Something more towards a dog park over at Veterans Park or whatever it becomes named as? And this isn't binding.
It seems like that's what people want.
Okay.
In the community.
Whether we can afford to make it the fancy dog park or not, that's down the road.
Dog park and.
Yeah.
Whatever.
Or, yeah, okay, so. Terry Park, we could probably spend three, four, or five hours on that because of the steering commission or steering committee and stuff. Um, it sounds like, one, that's a, you can't just, even if we bought more property and pushed urban growth. We can't build a riverfront thing that's, we've got this riverfront, who knows if we can ever afford to develop it or not? Or how that would work with the steering committee, but because of that, it's a more natural park.
Um, I believe Terry Park is part of the Urban Renewal District also, so, just for funding purposes, that is important to keep in mind.
Yeah, Brandon, right, does Terry Park?
Uh, no, it's not.
It's passed it, right?
Yeah.
That is the access to it.
Yes, correct, it's the access to it, yeah, yeah.
Yeah. So currently, right now, Terry Park is a walk-in park only. What planning commission? Does with Terry Park to say, hey, we want, we think it should be opened up this way or stainless, that's. I don't, I think Counsel, as long as you guys know how to. What it would take to change that, and that's, would be a lot of information coming from Brandon, not me. Um, but the overall scheme of things is that Terry Park is a natural area. Let's see what it would take to put some tables or even if you guys frame it bigger. Does that sound from the, from the counselors?
Yep. I would, yeah.
Okay, well, for Terry's part, I'd, I'd love to see a, a dock down there for some fishing and have, uh. Uh, open up the, uh, what is that, it's east end to allow a vehicle to drive down to launch. Kayaks, canoes, you know, whatever, to be able to float around. I'd love to see that east end and that bank picked up a little bit and, um. And another thought for this with the topography of this park. Um, I think that, uh, a creative person could, uh, could make a skate park down there. Very easily for some, uh, some of the older kids. I, uh, could, you know, could use that, so.
Okay, so maybe incorporate some kind of, what would it cost to bring some kind of skate park or? I mean, I don't think there's enough space, but for frisbee golf or that's something or, uh, City Yamhill building up. Uh, RV track or something like, but, uh, overall gist of Terry Park is. Embracing the fact that it's the waterfront.
No, it's so RV.
Okay, so, Counselor.
My first thought was, what is, what does that do for the liability of the city? If you create an area where people can jump off of or launch things off? Do, do we become liable for any accidents that may or may not occur with equipment that we put down there such as a dock?
We would most likely put, kind of like the recreational immunity, um, ordinance that came up resolution, maybe like, I think before you or both of our council. But last year, the recreational immunity stuff with L O C and preventing the city from being sued. We would normally have to put, you know, fishers from your own liability, uh, but then, but we would be responsible, just like any other type of city infrastructure where they're using it. And there was a malfeasance on the city side, we held liable, um, so that's where the liability would kick in.
And then my other thought on the skate park part of it is, I don't think it's a good idea to put any skate park here in water. Like, if, if there's any way that that could go sideways, it just seems like it would be really bad, so I understand where you're getting with it.
But so, see, what we could add.
All I was thinking was accidents and liability and how can people, city, when there's water involved.
Okay, so we'll get you spinning off the jug into the water.
In my head, that's. Okay, two things, first of all, there's a sliver of land that's owned by the county, that's not actually owned by Lafayette. So that was in the process with Maurice Brown was working with.
Donut Terry Park?
Um, I'm not exactly sure, that's why I'm asking Jim Jacks. There's a sliver of land that's not actually owned, that's an access point, that's not owned by Lafayette, it's owned by the county. That's one, second thing, the usability of the water behind, um, directly behind main, there's waterfall. So the access point for doing things like kayaking and whatever is actually very, is very, very limited. So keeping that in mind, that it's not actually usable, launchable. Like, there's a section between the locks and the waterfall that you can use, but that's maybe a mile at the most.
Yeah.
And then, so it's not as usable as you think it is. So, or as people assume it is, I should say, not.
So still the whole, still the whole, the director, and I'm gonna do next. What I'm hearing so far is beware of the topography, and you're saying, let's embrace the topography. So come to us or work on what could be done and what that would cost. But bare minimum, let's maybe see what it takes to put a few more picnic benches or what it would take to make it a drive-in if.
Yeah.
I'm gonna go with Counsel Carshol real quick. Sorry, he's heading.
Um, I love your idea of a boat launch and like a fishing dock, and even if we can't do the boat launch part of it, we can do the fishing dock. We fish down there all the time. And then, um. E- even if we can't come out of this meeting with like, oh, here's what we're gonna do, this, 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 at least we can not do something that would prevent us from doing.
From doing it in the future. That's kind of where, like, with Veterans Park, I mean, like.
Yeah.
Putting in the bare minimum of paths is not gonna make it that we can't keep moving forward to find phase two, phase three.
Yeah.
And so Terry Park.
Come to you with basically a suggestion that deserves the waterfront, usually our progress on waterfront, usually. But those are scalable, phaseable, and again, because of other things, but we. Want to keep it more minimalistic as opposed to anything, so that it can. Keep it more of a blind canvas so it can evolve, because we don't, we don't know today, so. Embrace the concept of less is more.
Mm-hmm, yes, sir.
Yeah, so when we, so one thing regarding opening it back up for driving access now, when the fence was put up there, it was because of the homeless camping situation. And there was no way to enforce that without just excluding vehicle access to the park. But since that's been done, grants pass has succeeded in their case.
Except for, it never wa-, in doing so, we found out that it's not so simple as us now. Just opening the gate, it never was approved to be a drive-in park.
Gotcha, and I had to be the bad guy, um, letting the council know, um.
Because, yeah, Counsel had put it up saying, okay, but we want to quickly look at what it would take to reopen this. And we found that it was never supposed to be in the drive-in.
And that led to all this master planning, let's just talk about the parks.
Okay.
So that's where we're getting at.
Something to keep in mind of somebody that's lived next to Commons Park for. Something to keep in mind, as somebody that's lived next to Commons Park for many, many years, um, that unhoused camping is a seasonal thing. So even though there's not an issue right now, as soon as the weather starts warming up, like early spring.
Yeah.
Definitely a seasonal issue, so it's not gone, it's just.
Yeah, one of those things where you add more benches or a bathroom or something and it entices, we have to, but, okay. So, what I'm hearing is Terry Park keeps the integrity of the fact that it is a waterfront park and it um, is natural. What can we do with that either in the future or in the near future stuff cannot hinder the possibilities of developing it, whether it's with stuff at the steering committee or on our own.
But what I, what I propose, one thing that would be really low impact that we could deliver is a seasonal staircase. Is like, there's a note, you go down at the bottom, they have access to that lower shelf that most people get down. And there's an opportunity, it'd probably be a lower barrier to get approved, to drop some concrete pilings with some U-bolts and then the across the street, and we could put a stair in to access.
So that would be something that the planning commission, you guys get to all decide what, what you guys want to. We're saying as a council, we will not come back, oh, I can't speak, you know, but as of now, it sounds like as long as it's, whatever you say, hey, we could put this in or this in, and it's not hindering the use of current or future water use possibilities. You're not gonna hear us say, no, we're gonna say no this because we need that amplification, or it must be a skate park. I know Brandon's already told me how much the liability of a skate park is. But I mean, there could also be, you know, funding for that, for building, but then the skate park is the maintenance. Okay, um, Commons Park. Commons Park currently has the community center. It's got a baseball diamond, um, I've heard that it might not be as big of a baseball diamond for some of the sports, but it is set up, you know, even for unofficial, I always would love to see a. I'm coming down there with my kickball, who wants to join me? And then everyone, I don't play kickball. Um, but we've got, right now, the big grassy field with a sports diamond.
And bleachers.
And, is there bleachers? Yeah. Um, and currently, right now, there is no play structure on that side of town. With that also is community um, usage as a community, how can we? What can we give the youth and recreational sports now that Veterans Park looks like it's going that direction? How can we, Commons Park's what we got left. So what can we add to Commons Park and still preserve that that is a big flat area for like harvest.
This is where um, I, I get into, uh, I vote for the bond. But, but I see uh, Commons Park as the shining diamond park of Lafayette right now for the near future. And uh, uh, walking around there, looking at, I, I don't, just a personal opinion. I don't think it's, it's the right size for a baseball field, but we certainly can do a lot of things with it. We talked about a, a covered pavilion with the basketball court, volleyball court. Pickleball seems to be uh, 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 very popular right now. The play structure that we're not gonna put in the dog park, even though dogs love to chase children. Fetch, but anyway, well, the wood could come down to uh, to Commons Park. Um.
And it doesn't have to be a huge one.
See, I see walking paths there, all, all through the park, drinking fountains, restrooms. Would be a great thing to have if we're gonna have a big enough area with a lot of folks. And uh, and put on events there, that would be great to have, would be restrooms. Um, and of course, some benches, maybe some picnic tables. Um, I also agree with a uh, uh, what I would like to see, and I think it would be really advantageous to have is a covered elevated stage with power that would add a lot of versatility, whether it be for music or announcements, for handing out uh.
Bingo night?
Bingo night for handing, you know, for having.
Gee plugs are cheap plugs for tomorrow night.
Okay.
But um, but I, I think that, uh, unfortunately, I know we don't have a lot of dough and uh, but that would, to, to make that, uh, like I said, the shining diamond park of Lafayette and, and it's a, it's a blank uh, a blank space right now and could be done completely. Uh, put some lighting down there, use lamp posts around.
It's close to the, to Third Street at like the downtown, if we're trying to do a renewal. Counselor Kit, or wait, are you okay with being?
Um.
Okay.
So what I'm looking at from the aerial view of this park, and I've noticed it before, I've noticed it at the Harvest Fest and the Christmas events. The lack of parking, um, which could become an issue. Um, and then we also, light posts are always nice, however, we've got houses that those could go in and that could be a disruption to the people living in those areas.
Two light posts, just so you know, there, uh, there's one. There's one on the second street, and yes, it goes away, but that's okay. Um, and then there's one on the back corner, so it's lit from both sides, so it's lit. Um, in the front and the other side.
Well, and we could add lighting that is for city use only, and then the resident, you know, like residents.
At night.
Yeah.
With the undesirable.
Or you could set it up so that those light posts are uh, illumination time, so that when it's during certain times when events are going on, you need bright light. And then at a certain time, it dropped down to everybody's just a very soft background light.
I do think that parking anywhere in this town.
Well, that was particularly cumbersome at the events, um, because of the lack of ability to get out in those areas.
But there is parking on all three sides.
Yes, there is. Patiently.
Very good idea.
Yeah.
Wasn't even thinking that.
Oh.
But uh, we're, we're spending a great deal, or more and more of the seven hundred thousand dollars that we've done.
Yes.
Fifty homes left in bulk development that we'll get SDCs on. And then it goes dry.
Yep.
And it's probably two years or more before we start seeing any more income, even maybe from the local. I would say it's two years maybe.
That's a short window, that's, yeah, that's a.
But, I mean, we're good.
Yes.
We're, we're, we're not, until we get to the point where we have the traffic study done. And then we can, we can assess where urban growth families can be.
Is Commons Park, Brandon, part of the urban growth or the urban renewal district?
Uh, yeah, it, it, but it, it's not a part of it, the right, like, we call it correctly.
I believe it.
Just slippers right out, allow me, I'll find out right now.
My house is at Commons Park.
Uh, can you show me?
Uh, question on the SDC is that seven hundred thousand dollars thing?
Yeah.
If you drain that, does that mean you don't have maintenance, or is that part of the?
So which, which brings it back to my point.
Yeah.
We need to, in these same steps, we need to incorporate some kind of, on the element to, to start building a fund. So that when we find a piece of land, that we can add a ten or fifteen acre piece of ground, uh, put baseball diamonds on or whatever, we can find it.
Yeah, and you can cover the things for maintenance. Yeah, the SDC by law, that money cannot be used for maintenance.
No.
It's being buying land, buying facilities and creating.
Maintenance, it's.
The other comment about Commons is, um, on the west side, there's a sixty foot wide public right-of-way. And it would be good for the planning commission to take a look at that, just to see if any of the properties back around in there, ain't that right-of-way for access? And if they don't, then the possible recommendation in the park plan would be for the city to vacate that right-of-way path. On the city's park side would come to the city, perhaps on the other side would go to those property owners. Or if you wanna maintain something for a pathway that would maybe get you a round Commons Park. Vacate only the eastern half of the right-of-way, that would come to the city. Keep the western half as public right-of-way and designate that as a bike pit path.
Brandon, do you have the answer to?
I might just. Counselor Newman, I mean, uh, Commissioner Newman, sorry.
The ball club is from a C.
That habit, um, so yes, you are correct, um, Terry Park is actually the first piece of land, um, in the Urban Renewal District. It goes up to Fifth, Parks of Fifth. Land Commons is included, so this whole scratch is.
Okay.
Any type of URA money that's brought in, obviously contingent of this property being developed, that could all go be reused inside that. So those two parts can benefit from development of.
Which is why we included them, so, yes, because I was thinking, uh, what do you? Did that get changed?
Okay, so I think we're kinda doing the same thing that we did on Terry Parks. I'm a big fan of a playground, doesn't have to be huge, but hopefully a cool one, I have a young son, so. And, and I think uh, we should leave it open for the idea of building the, what everybody else is talking about. The space, the ability to do that in the future.
So council sounds like based off of?
If, if, in, back in the, the, the paperwork we got, it's, it's a discussion about where the age growth is happening here in Lafayette. And the young kids are growing up. We have two parks right now that have uh, children's jungle gym and play areas for the young kids. It's the, it's the teens and teens.
That's where the, the basketball can, so I think.
I think we need to, I, I need to suggest.
That's a priority.
Probably look at, at Commons Park, dealing with the, the group, the older.
Yes, especially if we're taking away from Veterans Park, the older kids thing. So I think the playground concept is not to take away from anything, but if there's a spot to put a play, a little play structure, and it doesn't have to be the first one. That the community has voice, like, hey, we don't have a playground on this side, and we can have twenty on that side of ninety-nine. But the foot traffic to get over there.
I'd say right here in this corner here, this is this, this would.
That's for you guys to.
If it's community activities, every square inch that you take with a park or a covered pavilion does take away from things like a farmer's market.
That's where the pavilion, I'm, I'm not envisioning ones with benches built into it, you know, like.
Yeah.
Where it's a sports court, that then can double as a covered pavilion. Cause then it is that square. Okay, so it sounds like, okay, me.
Yeah, last thing, um, we keep mentioning that there's no uh, uh, play structures on the Terry and Commons Park area. That also means that there's no sports facilities on the other side.
Correct, correct. I know there's.
We use that school right now, sorry.
Yeah, we do have this school, if you dig far in the paperwork, there's kind of that agreement that the school's allowed to be used as.
I didn't know that.
Marshall Elementary, but don't really have many basketball hoops.
We have bats, oh, I know that's really good, cause I spent a couple hours staying on it. We now have a gaga pet that fits like fifteen kids, it's gorgeous and huge, I hate gaga ball, but for gaga ball, it's a great one. Uh, there's basketball, there's uh, the play structure, there's the tracks, there's soccer field. And there's um, tetherball.
And a baseball diamond.
There's the baseball diamond.
It's all open to the public?
Yes, now, it's still, it's after, yeah, so like, after-school program, I, I get to be the BME, I'm like, never using it, get off my property. Cause I, like, I, I try to get our program off of it so that the families can use it. That's in agreement with the school district, they still own it, but there's something somewhere, and do not quote me on it. That I dug up on some long time ago online, that talks about like the development where like, it gets not counted into the parks, but that, that is the, the, the school knows that the community usage happens. If I'm, I mean, I can look it up and send it to.
Which is allowed.
Yeah, it's allowed, I mean, it's still their rules and they develop it and it's not always open, but um, but yeah, there's always, I live on the grant, butting it, let me tell you how late basketball happens over there.
The point is, there is something on the.
We don't own it, but it is accessible.
Shoe hoops or.
Yeah.
Other things, right.
And it's lit, let me tell you again, I live right next to it. Um, okay, so those are the three parks, I think you guys have gotten a lot of enough feedback from us. And I didn't mean to like, be like, oh, that's what you guys get, I don't wanna squash your guys' or, you know, what will come about. Um, the goal is, we understand that there's not money, it's just sitting there to do it. So, tell us what, with the direction of those three parks being community, um, venue, sportsy, forty, something for the older kids on, you know, at Commons. Trailie, doggy parky, over at Veterans, Terry Park, preserving its natural topography. Play around with it, see what you can come out with, knowing that we don't have money and we can't promise you that we can sell it to the citizens. Um, but yeah, the, here's the a la carte, you know, and the stages.
Few a la carte pieces.
Yeah.
Even not every time, it just, there's a few pieces that could be, maybe some.
And as we work towards it, like, and that's my biggest thing, is that we can have this master plan and stuff, but okay, what's the order that we're gonna work towards building this?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, um, just as, as a line of business, um, we mentioned earlier about the funds and the SDC account. I, I would assume, as we move forward, the implementation of this plan in the next couple of years, as we achieve this final master plan document. Um, I would, I would hardly recommend council to not wanna spend all of that money. Because I would want to use it probably at least half of that to be um, matching funds for grants. So if we're looking at, hey, Brandon, what, what type of, what, what type of dollar figure do we have for the first five years of implementing this? I would say three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. I, I think that's conservative, yet liberal enough to do major projects, to at least show that something's being done. Now, now, just to put some of that in context, a bathroom is gonna cost at least hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Because Perkins was about a hundred and twenty-five or so, and we got a seventy-five thousand dollar grant. So just, and then, and then, site work for veterans, maybe like fifty to seventy-five thousand dollars, just to do site prep work. That doesn't include any engineering costs, et cetera. So a lot of the costs are gonna be costs that are gonna be preparation of, so I just wanna make sure. So, some of the, some of the, some of the unexpected, oh, whoa, 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 this is what we're gonna do. Well, this is what it's really gonna look like, I would hate to go to my council in the first two years of this and say, okay, cool, seven hundred thousand dollars is gone. Now we have no matching grant money, we have no support of the bond failed, and our, our general tax revenue that would go to parks being put towards public safety and fire. So here's where we are, guys. So just letting the, the realities of what the, the business side of things may look like.
Yeah.
Then, so I just wanna settle, set that up for everybody's.
That, that is one reason I was like, well, can we get a nonprofit forum and get a sponsor for, for a Friends of Lafayette Park, for a nonprofit? You have a vehicle for people to volunteer, it would be a place for businesses to donate money, or a place for us to fundraise for specific projects. I, I think that would help, and it'd be a continual vehicle where we can get feedback from the public and a place for them to engage with the park system. Maybe check a lot of boxes for us, if we could start off and just get a group of interested people together and give them a vehicle to operate within.
I would recommend that the council, after the, the planning document is done, and say, cool, well, let's see if we can build.
How do we, how do we, how, how do we? Reach out to the stars of, the stars that we.
Both your ideas are fantastic, you know, Friends of Lafayette Park, whatever, and like sell some bricks to people who wanna have their name, or some plans or planners or whatever it happens to be, you know, that's a council vote on.
Does council, does council want? Uh, you, do we want the planning commission to work on one park more important than the other? Or is it just?
I'm open to whatever.
Whatever you guys.
There seems to be a lot of push for the dog park situation.
Except leaving it alone, it's a dog park.
Yep.
Well, unofficial, unofficial.
Going back to Jen's comment that the dog park is not a huge park, even if you put a walking trail around there, it's not that big. So I think if you just did, if we talked about it on the commission, just did a. So I think if you just did, if we talked about it on the commission, just did a walking trail, that will be sufficient for Veterans Park right now, I think, you know, I think Commons Park.
Yeah.
And especially Commons Park, I think maybe is the focus that we do as a mission, that would be
Yes.
Best bang for the buck for the community.
Yeah, there's people that use the, the, the white gate access to go from, uh, Washington Street.
Bridge.
To bridge.
Yeah.
And they, they walk through there regularly, you know, when we take our.
Yeah, so we can put a, a path in there.
We have, we have to make sure that the doors are.
Okay, so.
Just a quick comment on funding. The State Marine Board funds docks and boat ramps. And the Oregon State Parks Department has grant money available for local government. Why, and once you have your park plan adopted and saying, we want this, that, and the other thing at this, these different parks, then that shows the state that there is commitment by the local government because they won't fund a boat dock or a ramp or whatever.
And then.
We want it at this park, they won't fund play equipment or anything else at another park unless it's in your plan. And it's based on your plan that causes them to fund your grant request and I don't know about this biennium coming up, but at least in the last four years or so, maybe even longer. Uh, the State Marine Board has had money for boat ramps and with our presentation tonight, they may even be very interested in having a new access point on the Amhill River main stem at, uh, Lafayette. And then with the state parks people, uh, I mean, every year, there's cities applying for money from the state parks to, I think, not, not only buy land, but also buy stuff to put in existing parks.
Yeah.
Yeah, this came back from our feedback from the Marine Board when the steering committee, they said they're, they're interested in funding, but they very much want their rear trail.
Yeah.
Connected, definitely want the whole project together.
Brandon, do you have, do you have enough information to help the planning commission, like you feel confident enough to know like what order or priority?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, when is a good chance to, I don't.
Expectations?
Yeah, not expectations, just when's the next update council can expect?
I mean, I, I mean, we'll give you rolling updates as, um, as the planning commission, uh, meets. I think what we're looking at, let's say, six months? Maybe Jim, we would have probably something with under three parks to present to council, at least as a formal document. And then I think maybe at that point, we would probably bring that to the community too. Well, I think based on, uh, a levelable from the council.
Everything's so slow.
No, I know.
We've already had, we've already had numerous public, public comments.
Yeah.
And public participation portions.
Yeah.
I think if it gets down to where council is worried about the priorities of the money being spent and the planning commission feels kind of the same way, we may do a prioritization and, uh, make that in the community at the community center. Um, I was hoping to do that on the town hall we had in October, which is why I did it online.
Oh, yes, sir.
It was, it was lightly attended, I would try to do another community engagement session if there seemed to be some device of this forward, going forward on, but I think staff and planning commission and council kind of.
So.
We have to be smart enough to set priorities, but also know those priorities need to be able to dance and show.
Yes.
So.
Yeah, and bigger picture though, it's definitely going to be community engagement.
Okay, so.
And to get this adopted, it's, uh, statewide planning goal eight, park and recreation. And so when we adopt our existing plan for two thousand thirteen, had a, was adopted as the park and rec element of the comp plan. So this plan will be amending that, it will be the new park and rec element of comp plan. That means planning, uh, public hearing, the planning commission, recommendation to council, council public hearing, and passing an ordinance adopting it into the comp plan.
Yeah. Okay, so, um, the. No, you're good?
I'm a couple of years out of, of doing estimates, just about to have it in my head, but I, it's just a, just a fairly qualified guess, all of the three hundred thousand dollars that, that Brandon says we have uh, wouldn't cover everything we want to do right now in Commons Park.
Oh, absolutely, no, we know that.
Yeah.
No, wait, we need to.
Spring clean the rack.
I think what council's saying to you guys is, is here's three parks that we know have no funding. Please don't, please don't, council's gonna have a hard time approving anything if it takes away the end goal of trying to get some topography of.
The citizens have already spoken to you, why?
Yeah.
Let's start with. Figure out how to put it together.
So, okay.
Start with nothing, let's go and create a map or a roadmap and give just a little bit.
Yes.
Gonna throw out one more name, um.
Hillary Park, I love it.
No, not that.
I was thinking at the beginning.
Uh, saving effort at the end, that's right, um, I know for a fact that, uh, Daughters of the American Revolution. They, uh, they work on memorials and they work on honorariums and.
And the, that, so.
All that stuff.
They are working on sharing.
Whatever it takes.
On markers and getting grant funding for possible historic markers, especially down at Commons Park, um.
They could, they could work on getting a grant for themselves to put a memorial in up at Veterans.
Yes, but they can't do that without us saying we are a lot like, well, there's always a memorial, but, okay.
How many middle water waders that ever had anything to do with Lafayette? That would be another door into Veterans Foreign Wars or, uh, American Legion and those kinds of organizations with their funding for memorials.
So, sorry, lastly, on, on a staff level, I don't think you knew anything else, nor I, to make sure, on top of this, I know there's been some conversations from the planning commission, two meetings now where we mentioned about recording park development land as part of a subdivision. I think that's the thing that if the planning commission really wants to recommend to council, which I think it's been a discussion amongst myself and council when it came to the Meadowbrook when we first, um, took our seats. Um, but then also, um, we'll need to also look at code revisions for Terry Park as well. So all the, we would have different moving mechanisms.
Yes.
Because now what's Terry Park gonna become, then we have to look at allowances and then obviously then additional public safety aspects of all those things, so just a couple of facets of these other things that the city council can work on as we start doing this. But those are all, all about to review the, the L C, the L C P O as well, because those will be tied into that, so three different documents will have to be revised.
Okay, I have on the table a motion for adjourned the council meeting portion of this.
I second.
Okay, uh, council approved to adjourn the meeting?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, councils, Russell didn't aye.
Aye.
I heard him.
The planning commission wants to adjourn.
Oh, we don't know that. Can you call, they would like you to call roll for the.
Please stop talking, thank you.
Um, what, what's being requested, I heard there was potentially a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn and we want to make a.
We have a second. We have a second.
All right.
Commissioner Viola. Uh, Commissioner Rogers.
Aye.
Commissioner Bowling.
Aye.
Uh, Commissioner Webb.
Aye.
Commissioner Nguyen.
Aye.
Commissioner Adamson.
Aye.
Commissioner, uh, Kerr.